Good afternoon, everyone. My name is... Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed Flynn. I am the City Council President. Viewers can watch the City Council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I'd like to ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Thank you. I'd like to ask everyone in the room to be respectful and do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave, and if you fail to comply, you will be escorted out. Please also note that according to City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. I would ask my colleagues to treat each other with respect during this meeting, and again, there is no participation from the audience. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum? They were just here. Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Lara, Counselor Louie Jean, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, and Counselor Worrell. Can we... Mr. Chair, Mr. Clerk, can we do the roll call again? Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Braden, Counselor Baker here, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Lara, Counselor Louie Jean, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, and Counselor Worrell. And Counselor Arroyo. We have a quorum. Thank you. We have a quorum, and I want to apologize for the late start today to the audience. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I would like to call City Council Michael Flaherty. Please come to the podium and introduce today's clergy.
Thank you, Counsel President Flynn. A great day and a great week in the Flaherty household today is my twins, Jack and Ella's 22nd birthday, and they also graduated from college this past Sunday and Monday. So my wife Lauren and I could not be prouder than our twins than we are in our twins and excited about their future. I have the distinct honor today of introducing Father John Sheridan, pastor of the Chilstown Catholic Collaborative in District One comprising of the parishes of St. Francis de Sales and St. Mary's St. Catherine, as well as the Harvest on the Vine Food Pantry and the Good Shepherd School. Father Sheridan hails from a family of eight brothers and sisters. His father Dennis came here from County Mayo, Ireland, while his mother Elizabeth was baptized at St. Joseph in Somerville, a product of Mary Immaculate of Lord's Parish and Newton Public Schools, as well as St. John's Seminary in Brighton. Father Sheridan was ordained a diocesan priest in 1990. A native of Newton, he served a variety of assignments in the Archdiocese, including pastor of St. James Parish, the Cranberry Catholic Collaborative in Middleborough, Lakeville, Rochester, and the Blessed Mother of Morningstock Collaborative in Riviere, Chelsea, and Everett. He is now in Boston, and he is now running the Chilstown Collaborative, leading the community of Chilstown and the great people of Chilstown. And please give Father John Sheridan a warm City Council welcoming as he delivers today's invocation.
It's great to be... It's a great honor to be with you today. It's fitting, and I think it's powerful that not only this weekend do we celebrate Memorial Day, we also celebrate Pentecost, the Holy Spirit coming upon the apostles and sending them forth to proclaim the good news. We are all called in one way or another to bring peace to our world by our actions, by our words, by who and what we are. St. Paul writes in today's second... We'll hear in the second reading this weekend, "In the same way the Holy Spirit too comes to aid of our weakness, for we do not know how to pray as we are, but the Spirit himself intercedes with inexpressible groanings, and the one who searches hearts knows what the intention of the Spirit is, because he intercedes for the holy ones according to God's will." Lord God, as we gather, we come with hearts and minds, we pray open to your holy will. We ask that your guidance come upon these counselors, help them to discern your will, help them to discern what is good for the people of this city, that we may respond in turn with hearts that are open, voices that are clear, intentions that are honorable, that we build up this community, this town, this city, that people may see the good work being done here. And we give praise not only to those who serve it so well, but to the God who brings us together. We ask you to bless them and to bless us in the work that we do, and we ask this in your name. Amen.
Could you please join us in the Pledge of Leagues?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father, for those words and for bringing us together on this day. Again, at this time, let me ask Counsel Michael Flaherty to step forward and introduce a special guest we have today.
Thank you. I'd just like to call upon our Boston Renegades. The Boston Renegades are the Boston's premier women's tackle football team in New England. They're defending national champions. They've won four straight national championships. The tradition of Boston Renegades runs deeply, having been born in the legacy of prior teams such as the Boston Militia, Militia, New England Intensity, Bay State Warriors, Boston Rampage, and Boston Mutiny, Massachusetts Mutiny. The Boston Renegades are comprised of some of the best athletes in New England, on and off the field. They are educators, entrepreneurs, trainers, public safety officers, business owners, and many, many more professionals. And congratulations to all of them and to their future success on and off the field. So on behalf of the Boston City Council, I want to congratulate you both and the entire team. I know that it was a team effort here, but we're so excited to have you here in Boston. We need another repeat.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. I'm Carolyn Glenn, corner of the Boston Renegades, and on behalf of the entire Boston Renegades organization, I'd like to say thank you for having us and bestowing this honor upon us. We really appreciate receiving this honor once again. As we know, Boston is a city of traditions, and especially in Boston sports, there is a tradition and a commitment to winning, and we're happy to be a part of it. And we're happy that this trip to the City Hall Council's meeting is part of that tradition. We look forward to seeing you in a few months after we win our fifth national championship in a row. And so thank you very much for having us, and we'll see you soon. All right. All right. (Applause).
Let's get them up for a quick photo. Let's get them up for a quick photo with the Renegades. Give a short kiss. I don't want them thinking they're hurting. The other teams are starting getting ready to go.
Yeah.
They'll be on the scouting reports.
That's right. That's right. Thank you.
I played hockey.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Thank you. We have. We have. Yeah. It's hard, and all the working women's... You know, we're hoping to get paid for that. Thank you so much.
We have one more special presentation. Could I ask City Counselor Erin Murphy to please come forward and introduce the next special guest?
Thank you, Counsel President. And before I read the citation, I would like Chief Uli and the EMS, could you come up and join us up here, please? Thank you. Oh, you can come on up here. Thank you. So I have the honor to offer a resolution recognizing the contributions of the Boston Emergency Medical Services and to also recognize Boston Emergency Medical Services Week. In 1974, President Gerald Ford authorized National Emergency Medical Services Week to celebrate and honor the important contributions of EMS professionals in safeguarding the health, safety, and well-being for their communities. And Boston's municipal emergency medical services plays a vital role working on the front lines of public health and public safety priorities, including infectious diseases, homelessness, addiction, the rising need for behavioral health services, and homeland security, and is one of our three public safety agencies who respond to 911 calls in the city of Boston. Their department cares for patients with clinical proficiency, professionalism, and compassion, and is recognized leader in emergency medical service and is also the largest municipal EMS in New England. The Boston EMS is the city's Boston ambulance service, and they care for patients with clinical professionalism. Members of Boston EMS answered the call for over 134,000 medical emergencies in 2022, serving residents across every neighborhood of the city. Every year, National EMS Week has a theme, and this year, the theme is "Where Emergency Care Begins." Speaking to the value, Boston EMS plays in enhancing patient care coordination, particularly for those with barriers to accessing primary care. The department has implemented two new mobile integrated healthcare programs, including the 911 call transfer of eligible and interested behavioral health patients to mental health clinicians, as well as an alternative destination program for patients experiencing substance use disorder. Be it resolved that the Boston City Council honors the contributions of the Boston Emergency Medical Service Department and recognizes May 21st through the 27th, 2023 to be Boston Emergency Medical Services Week. And I know I speak on behalf of all my colleagues that we thank you for your service and thank you for all you do. Thank you.[891.32][891.32](Applause).
No, good afternoon, everyone. I just want to say thanks on behalf of all of us at Boston EMS. It's an honor to be here, and thank you for taking the time out. I know you've had an incredibly busy schedule, and it's not missed on any of us. We'll certainly share this with the members of the department. As the numbers kind of backed up, it's a pretty busy operation. So when we try to grab a few bodies to come down here today, and this is what we're going to wrestle up right now, but I know a lot of people like to be down there, so it's just an honor to represent them. I want to thank this body for all the support that we've gotten from the council, that we continue to get, that we still work with on a daily basis. We're working about... Talking about tunnel closures in East Boston with Counselor Braden about other sighting issues. There isn't a district counselor or a citywide counselor that we don't work on a pretty regular basis with, and we want to be responsive to you and your constituents. Don't ever hesitate to reach out to us. We work for you, we work for the city, we work for our residents. Thank you very much for this, and...
Thank you. Will our colleagues join us for a photo, please?[983.13][983.13](Applause).
Thank you to the EMS team for your professionalism, for being here. Mr. Clerk, can we ensure the record is reflected that Counselor Coletta and Counselor Worrell are present? Mr. Clerk, we don't have a quorum right now. Yeah. We're in a brief recess until my colleagues come back. We have a quorum. There's seven of us. We... We all have to stay in here to get the work done, everybody. We're not able to get the work done outside of this room. We're actually the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing, no discussion on the matter, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communications from her on to the mayor. Mr. Clerk, please read Docent 0963 to 0966 together.
Document number 0963, message in order for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year '23 appropriation from the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $85,600 to provide funding for the Boston Public Health Commission for the fiscal year '23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Public Health Commission and SENA Local 9158. Document number 0964, message in order for your approval, supplemental appropriation order for the Public Health Commission for fiscal year '23 in the amount of $85,600 to cover the fiscal year '23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston Public Health Commission and SENA Local 9158. The terms of the contracts are October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2022, and October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2025. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 1.5% in January of 2022, 2% in January 2023, 2% in January 2024, and 2% in January 2025. The agreements also contain other benefits, including increased hazardous duty differentials, filed in the office of the city clerk on May 22nd, 2023. Document number 0965, message in order for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year '23 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $32,334 to provide funding for the Parks and Recreation Department for the fiscal year '23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Boston and the Boston Park Rangers Association. Document number 0966, message in order for your approval, supplemental appropriation order for the Parks and Recreation Department for fiscal year '23 in the amount of $32,334 to cover the fiscal year '23 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the Boston Park Rangers Association. The terms of the contract are July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2%, 1.5%, and 2% to be given in October of each fiscal year of the contract term, filed in the office of the city clerk on May 22nd, 2023.
Thank you. These dockets will be referred to the Committee on City Services, Innovation, Technology. Mr. Clerk, please read Docent 0967.
Document number 0967, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount not to exceed $1,600,000 in the form of a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, grant passed through the United Way Worldwide, to be administered by the mayor's Office of Housing. The grant will fund humanitarian services for individuals and families encountered by the Department of Homeland Security at the southern border through the Emergency Food and Shelter Program.
We're going to move on, Mr. Clerk, to the next document. We'll come back to it.
Document number 0968, message in order authorizing the city of Boston through its property management department to accept the equipment itemized in the attached order that is being donated from the Boston Planning and Redevelopment Agency, also known as BPDA. The BPDA is vacating its space at 22 Dry Dock Avenue, Boston, Mass. 02210, and it no longer has any need of the equipment.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Baker, the chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, Transportation. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm asking to suspend and pass this. This is basically a workshop that's filled with maintenance tools and different things like that, snow removal. The space directly next to it was the boat building program that was a woodworking shop that we actually cleared out a couple of months ago, and all that equipment was donated to the People's Academy. So this is a place that's right next door, and we're going to accept everything that's in there under the city of Boston property management. So I ask for a suspend and pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker seeks suspension of rules and adoption of Docent 0968. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The document has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you read Docent 0969, please?
Document number 0969, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $15,000 in the form of a grant for the development of diversity, equity, and inclusion, also known as DEI, training for CERT programs within the region awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security.
Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0970.
Document number 0970. Message in order authorizing the City of Boston Department of Innovation and Technology to enter into a contract for payment processing services for a term of up to five years.
Thank you. This docket, 0970, will be referred to the Committee on City Services, Innovation Technology. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0971.
Document number 0971. Message in order for your approval of the receipt of a preservation restriction on St. James African Orthodox Church located at 50 Cedar Street, Boston, Mass. 02119-1431.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker, the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, Transportation. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Historic Boston Inc. is donating the City of, to the City of Boston Landmarks Commission for the historic St. James African Orthodox Church in Roxbury. Historic Boston is selling this property to the Roxbury Action Program for use as a nonprofit center for community-based organizations, and all of the closing documents are complete. They are pressing up against the expiration of the acquisition financing they received from the Life Initiative on May 31st, and the, the preservation restriction will give the Boston Landmarks Commission permanent rights to review any proposed changes to the historic church building so that it is both protected and preserved in perpetuity, in perpetuity, and for these reasons, I am asking to suspend and pass this docket.
Thank you. Counsel Baker seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0971. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has been passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0972.
Document number 0972. Message transmitting certain information under Section 17F relative to BPS student enrollment. Document number 0915. Passed by the City Council on May 8th, 2023.
Thank you. This docket will be placed on file, which is docket 0972. Reports of public officers and others, Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0973 to 0974.
Document number 0973. Communication was received from Timothy Smith, Executive Officer of the Boston Retirement Board. Read follow-up to fiscal year 24 retiree cost of living adjustment, also known as COLA base vote. And document number 0974. Notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of Nicholas Gold as a member of the Air Pollution Control Commission effective immediately.
Thank you. This docket, 0973 to 0974, will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0975?
Document number 0975. Communication was received from Counsel Liz Braden submitting documents regarding analysis of proposed redistricting plans.
Thank you. This docket, 0975, will be referred to the Committee on Civil Rights, Immigration, Advancement. Reports of committees. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket 0710?
Document number 0710. The Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on April 5th, 2023. Document number 0710. Message in order for your approval in ordinance governing construction and demolition operations in the City of Boston. Submit a report recommending that the ordinance ought to pass.
Thank you. The, the Chair recognizes Counsel Royo, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Counsel Royo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Government Operations held a hearing on Friday, May 19th, 2023 on docket 0710, an ordinance governing construction and demolition operations in the City of Boston, which was sponsored by Mayor Wu. I would like to thank my council colleagues for attending, Council President Flynn and Counsel Murphy. I'd also like to thank members of the administration for attending, Trin Nguyen, Chief of the Workers' Empowerment Cabinet, Jody Sugarman-Brosnan, Deputy Chief of the Worker Empowerment, Sean Leiden, Commissioner of Inspection Services Department, Chris English, Chief of Staff for the Inspection Services Department, and Lou Mandarini, the Senior Advisor for Labor for Mayor Michelle Wu. The, this ordinance seeks to reduce worker injuries and fatalities on construction and demolition sites in the City of Boston. This ordinance, as filed, will require that all construction and demolition projects seeking a permit with the Inspection Services Department submit a site safety plan affidavit that workers are trained on the site safety plan, and that a site safety coordinator with at least 30 hours of OSHA training certification be designated for larger construction and demolition projects. It will also give the Inspection Services Department greater enforcement capacity that they previously lacked. Passage of this ordinance will ensure that construction and demolition projects are conducted in a manner that protects the public, workers, and properties from potential dangers. It will also require that safety mechanisms be put in place and give ISD the necessary resources and power to address safety issues. Additionally, the City, through the Worker Empowerment Cabinet, will provide technical assistance and training to eliminate barriers to compliance and to ensure worker safety. As Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I recommend that this matter ought to pass. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Royo. Counsel Royo seeks acceptance of the committee report, passage of docket 0710. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has been passed. Matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0760 to 0782.
Document number 0760 through 0762. Orders for the fiscal year 24 operating budget, including annual appropriations for departmental operations for the School Department and for other post-employment benefits. Document numbers 0763, 0765, and 0766. Orders for capital fund transfer appropriations. Document number 0764, 0767, and 0768. Orders for the capital budget, including loan orders and lease purchase agreements. And document number 0769 through 0782. Orders authorizing limits for departmental revolving funds for fiscal year 24, including law, tourism, arts and culture, environment, Boston Centers for Youth and Families, schools, and parks, Parkman Fund, and PEG Access Fund.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson, the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On May 22nd, the, at 10:00 a.m., the Committee on Ways and Means held a hearing on the Boston Public Schools FY24 budget focus on enriching programs. I was joined by council colleagues, Counselor Erin Murphy, Counselor President Flynn, Counselor Julio Mejia, and Counselor Gabriela Coletta. The administration panel included Sam DePina, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, Anna Tavard, Deputy Superintendent of Equity, Family, and Engagement Advancement, Denise Snyder, Chief of Family Engagement, Miriam Ortiz, Chief of Community Engagement, Avery Esdale, Senior Director of Athletics, and Tony Beatrice, Executive Director of the Arts. During this hearing, we focused on discussion of various topics, including arts, athletics, summer programs, music and after-school programs, tutoring, and partnerships. We explored how these programs can contribute to professional development and capacity building and of families across the district fostering community engagement. A major concern raised was coordinating athletic services and the need to connect with athletic coordinators and enhance access to facilities. Additionally, we discussed collaborating with city entities to make improvements of at the Athletic Department, also investing further in capital to, to address facility needs. Another concern was about arts, enhancing our arts, and there was questions about ensuring that every school had arts program, arts teacher, and facilities to support that, hence the need to also fix their theater space or auditorium. On May 23rd at 10:00 a.m., I held a hearing with the Committee on Ways and Means to discuss FY24 budget related to the Mayor's Office of Housing. Boston Public, Boston, with BPDA and Grow Boston, BPDA attended to basically answer any questions that we may have relating to housing or community engagement process, Article 80 revision, and so forth. I was joined by my council colleagues, Counsel Erin Murphy, Counsel President Flynn, Counsel Liz Braden. The admini, I was also joined by my council colleague Julio Mejia and, sorry, Counselor Lara. The administration panel included Sheila Dillon, Chief of Housing, Rick Wilson, Deputy Director of Administration and Finance, Robert Terrell, Director of Fair Housing, Jeff Thomas, Special Assistance for BPDA. The discussion began with us requesting more information, the FY24 budget, a breakdown basically of IDP developments and how that supplemented for the need for affordable housing in the City of Boston, as well as working with allocating IDP units for Section 8 recipient specific, and also from the Ministry of Housing highlighted their initiatives of lower area medium incomes, just working on lowering AMI. The gist of it is that Boston specifically was not, is not able to, or at least it's not addressing the affordable housing for the AMI for Boston, and the chief basically spoke to how she is working on lowering AMI, increasing IDPs in development in order to address it. The gist of it is that when you actually calculate how many IDP units and AMIs are actually addressed in neighborhoods such as Roxbury or other communities of lower socioeconomic class, that we're only addressing a very small fraction, if not under 10% of the need for low affordable housing. So when that, when we say affordable housing, that we are addressing, we are building, and we are addressing some of the middle class, but as far as the lower socioeconomic class or people of lower AMI, that they are actually not being able to be housed and getting displaced in the City of Boston. Then we also talked about, you know, hence like the idea of raising salaries and paying people fair wages, an example of city employees who are not making not even 50 AMI or up to 60 AMI, but then we're creating housing for affordable homeownership as low as 80% AMI, and the need to bring it to 60, and then folks obviously expressed, testified on bringing it as low as 30% AMI for renting and as low as 50% AMI for homeownership. Also, last week, we held public testimony. A lot of community members came with many testimonies about budget amendments, specifically around arts and culture, crisis, mental health crisis response, decreasing the police budget. A lot of conversation about housing, expressing that, again, lowering AMI and increasing IDP or inclusionary development, and also funds to be moved for Office of Presuppository Budget. Then folks talked about that the PB Office, Office of Presuppository Budget, that the community fought really hard, and how in comparison to Somerville, that we are not even doing as close as we need to for the Office of PB, and as well as in terms of housing or in terms of police reform, and how we are reallocating funds for crisis response, that we weren't even matching what Somerville was doing, and that we should be looking at data to really monitor or implement metrics that we can actually say that we are working towards reform, as opposed to just saying, or just building, or just saying that we're putting out funds for programs when it's not sufficient to actually address the need for crisis response in Boston. And then on May 18th, also last week, we did a, I held a working session at 2:00 p.m. basically to discuss with my colleagues, to present different amendments. We had a robust conversation about different priorities and where funds were, or it seemed that where funds are being inflated in the budget, and how we could actually work with our budget analysis to give a breakdown, and I just wanted to take the time to thank again our budget analyst, Karishma. We, she's a lifesaver, brilliant, and she's been doing a tremendous job in breaking down and aggregating the data that we need in order to figure out where exactly we can take funds in order to make our amendments. So I'm looking forward to a very exciting amendment process, more working sessions, conversations with my colleagues to figure out how we're going to make these amendments. Council colleagues made several suggestions on tourism, arts and culture, Office of Equity, Human Services Department, Office of Police Accountability and Transparency, Blackmail Advancement, Women's Advancement, Boston Public Health Commission, LGBTQ Advancement, Public Works, Mayor's Office of Housing, Worker Empowerment, Office of Food Justice, as well as BPHC, and of course, for the crisis response, but we did, I did have to clarify that for quasi-agencies, that we had no control in terms of amendments, but that we could either reduce and increase according to what the code tells us. So look forward to more working sessions and, sorry, one more. On, we also held, I also held FY budget for Boston Public Schools in enrichment specifically, and then that we talked about measuring student success before and after school program, BPS, in, in terms of BPS dashboard and how they were addressing the need for their students. The amendment process is a very important one. Boston constituents, the citizens of Boston, feel that we must, it's our responsibility, and trust us with the process, to be able to utilize something that they fought, that they worked and organized and fought so hard for. I am asking for my council colleagues to show up to the working sessions, to work with me, so that we can put amendments on the floor by June 7th. The deadline I've given you was this Friday, but understandably so with redistricting taking up some space and my hearings. I would like to extend for a few more days, I will submit an email to you specifying the date, specifying, giving you again the form, the Google form to use. Please submit all amendments to my office so that I can prepare a cohesive report. I would like to build transparency with the community and be able to publicize all of your suggestions. I think that it's important that we are honest and transparent about what we care about, what our priorities are. I look forward to proposing an amendment, just really quick, one amendment that I really, really, really think is a priority, is to increase our councilor staff's pay raise, their salaries, and so I look forward to your support with that, and some amendments will be put on the floor separately, considering how folks are supporting it, and then if I know that it's unanimous, obviously those amendments will go together. And if we need to count each vote on each amendment one at a time, that's what we'll do, in order for us to all have a fair opportunity to be able to voice our positions on each amendment. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I continue to look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, and Counsel Fernandez Anderson, thank you for your professional leadership during the, the budget process. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, we're on two dockets, 0928, 0930. Yeah, these, these dockets will be man-
Please submit all amendments to my office so that I can prepare a cohesive report. I would like to build transparency with the community and be able to publicize all of your suggestions. I think that it's important that we are honest and transparent about what we care about, what our priorities are. I look forward to proposing an amendment, just really quick, one amendment that I really, really, really think is a priority, is to increase our council staff's pay raise of their salaries. And so I look forward to your support with that. And some amendments will be put on the floor separately, considering how folks are supporting it. And then if I know that it's unanimous, obviously those amendments will go together. And if we need to count each vote on each amendment one at a time, that's what we'll do, in order for us to all have a fair opportunity to be able to voice our positions on each amendment. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I continue to look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez-Anderson. Council Fernandez-Anderson, thank you for your professional leadership during the budget We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, we're on two dockets, 0928, 0930. Yeah, these dockets were remaining committee. Do you want to go back to that one? Okay. Mr. Clerk, we're going to go back to the previous one we skipped over. And, Mr. Clerk, can you reflect the record that Council Lara and Council Louie Jen are And can you please read that previous docket that was already read back into the record?
Docket number 0967, Message and Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expend an Amount Not to Exceed $1,600,000 in the Form of a Grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Grant passed through the United Way Worldwide to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Housing. The grant will fund humanitarian services for individuals and families encountered by the Department of Homeland Security at the southern border through the Emergency Food and Shelter Program.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Lara, the Chair of the Housing and Community Development. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I would like to suspend the rules and pass this important grant for $1.6 million in FEMA aid. In April of 2023, the city of Boston applied for FEMA's Emergency Food and Shelter Program for $1.51 million to support the increased arrival of migrants on the border from July 1, 2022 to December 31, 2023. The award is intended to cover both previously incurred and future costs. And on May 5, 2023, FEMA announced awards of $332.5 million for this emergency food and shelter program, of which the city of Boston was awarded $877,351.69 in advanced funding for future costs. The award notification for our previously incurred costs will be made by the end of May, and therefore, the total award, we hope, will be closer to $1.5 million as requested. This award is crucial to ensuring that Boston can continue to support all of the migrants that are arriving here, and while also reducing the burden of operating budget on the city of Boston. Since July 21, the city has directly supported over 350 migrant families, and we've worked with community partners to support over 2,000 families. We anticipate that Boston will continue to play an important role going forward in providing temporary housing and support services until families can be incorporated into the state's emergency assistance program. We are still waiting for the full terms and conditions of the grant from FEMA and the United Way Worldwide, which will determine the final eligible uses and required documentation that we'll have to submit, but Boston's application based on really eligibility guidelines. And the city submitted both costs and incurred and anticipated by the Mayor's Office of Housing, of Housing's contracted emergency shelter services. Based on the eligibility guidance, and the city's submitted both cost incurred and anticipated by the Mayor's Office, these costs, I think, are specific to, specific to providing incoming migrant individuals, and therefore, I ask that we suspend and pass the grant so that these much-needed funds can be dispersed. Thank you, President Flynn.
Thank you, Council Lara. Council Lara seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0967. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, we're back on reports of committees. Matt has recently heard for possible action, starting with 0928. Mr. Clerk, can you read docket 0928, 0930, 0935 through 0937, 0941, 2, 0942, and 0959?
Docket number 0928, notice was received from Adam Cedarbaum. Corporation Council providing an update on the lawsuit that was filed against the Boston City Council in U.S. District Court for the District of Massachusetts. Case number 122-CV-12048, Rashid Walters et al. versus Boston City Council et al. Docket number 0930, message and ordinance amending city council electoral districts, filed in office of the city clerk on May 15, 2023. Docket number 0935, communication was received from Council Liz Braden submitting documents regarding redistricting litigation. Docket number 0936, communication was received from Council Liz Braden submitting documents regarding minutes of the Committee on Redistricting and messages of disapproval. Docket number 0937, communication was received from Council Liz Braden submitting documents regarding redistricting archival records. Docket number 0941, ordinance amending city council electoral districts. Docket number 0942, ordinance amending city council electoral districts. And docket number 0959, ordinance amending city council electoral districts.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Louie Jen, Chair of the Committee on Civil Rights, Council Louie Jen, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I'm going to ask central staff to give out copies of the committee report.
I'm sorry. The Chair recognizes Council Louie Jen.
Thank you, President Flynn. I'm going to ask central staff to give out copies of the committee report.
We'll take a couple of minutes to make sure everyone gets a copy.
I want to thank my colleague, Council colleagues for engaging in this requirement for us to redistrict every 10 years to make sure that we are abiding by the constitutional requirement of one person, one vote, as explained in Reynolds v. Sims. This has been a difficult process. After the federal judge enjoined the map that this body passed, we had the task of passing a map in a very expedited manner. And so today, I bring before you docket number 0942, in ordinance amending city council electoral districts. This docket was one of four filed on May 17, 2023, about which the committee held hearings to draw a new map and was used as the starting point for council deliberations. The district delineated by docket number 0942 as filed included the following. District 1, consisting of precincts numbered 1 through 14 of Ward 1, precincts 1 through 8 of Ward 2, and precincts numbered 1, 1 through 4, 6, 11, and 13 of Ward 3. District 2, consisting of precincts numbered 7, 8, 12, 14 through 16 of Ward 3, precincts 1 through 3 and 6 of Ward 4, precincts 1, 13, and 14 of Ward 5, precincts 1 through 12 of Ward 6, precincts 1 through 6 of Ward 7. District 3, consisting of precinct numbered 15 of Ward 1, precincts 7 through 10 of Ward 7, precincts 1, 2, and 6 of Ward 8, precinct 1 of Ward 9, precincts 3 and 5 through 10 of Ward 13, precincts 1, 3, 4, and 6 through 9 of Ward 15, precincts 1 through 12 of Ward 16. District 4, consisting of precincts numbered 1 through 14 of Ward 14, precinct 2 and 5 of Ward 15, precincts 1 through 14 of Ward 17, precincts 1 and 2 of Ward 18. District 5, consisting of precincts numbered 3 through 23 of Ward 18, precincts 10 through 13 of Ward 19, precincts 2, 4, 8, and 9 of Ward 20. District 6, consisting of precincts numbered 6 through 9 of Ward 10, precincts 4 through 10 of Ward 11, precincts 1 through 9 of Ward 19, 1, 3, 5 through 7, and 10 through 20 of Ward 20. District 7, consisting of precincts numbered 4, 5, 8, 9, and 11 of Ward 4, precincts 3 through 5 of Ward 8, precincts 2 through 7 of Ward 9, precincts 1 through 3 of Ward 11, precincts 1 through 9 of Ward 12, precincts 1, 2, and 4 of Ward 13. District 8, consisting of precincts numbered 5, 9, 10, and 17 of Ward 3, precincts 7, 10, and 12 of Ward 4, precincts 2 through 12 and 15 of Ward 5, precincts 1 through 5 of Ward 10, precincts 1 and 2 of Ward 21. District 9, consisting of precincts numbered 3 through 16 of Ward 21, and precincts 1 through 13 of Ward 22. Information received at hearings. On May 8, 2023, Judge Patty Saris of the United States District Court for the District of Massachusetts granted plaintiff's motion for preliminary injunction in case number 122-CV-12048, Rashid Walters et al. versus Boston City Council et al. By granting the plaintiff's motion, Judge Saris enjoined the map as approved by the Boston City Council on November 2, 2022, and thereby prevented the city from conducting the 2023 election for district council seats using that map. On May 10, 2023, the city of Boston Law Department filed a letter with the city council that explained that ruling, that the ruling and its resulting requirement that the city council pass another map. The committee held hearings on this docket on Friday, May 19, 2023, Monday, May 22, 2023, and Tuesday, May 23, 2023. Dockets numbered 0935 through 0937 were added to these hearings, which were filed by Council Liz Braden and referred to the committee on May 17, 2023. These dockets include documents relating to redistricting litigation, minutes of the Committee on Redistricting, and redistricting archival records. During these hearings, members of the council used the map filed by the chair as the starting point. Using the redistricting, redistricting tool District R, councils were able to see the starting point map and then make suggestions and move precincts in and out in real time. Members of the public were invited to testify during public testimony periods at each of the three hearings, in person and virtually. The community was also invited to submit written and video testimony to the record. And I, again, want to thank central staff who stayed late with us on all three evenings to make sure that we were, had this public hearing working session hybrid, where we were able to hear from members of the public. So summary of the amendments. Based on council deliberations during the hearing and public testimony, the following changes were made to the docket as filed. 315 and 316 moved from District 2 to District 3. 09181 and 77 moved from District 3 to District 2. 46 moved from District 2 to District 8. 47 moved from District 8 to District 7. 1912 and 1807 moved from District 5 to District 4. And 182 moved from District 4 to District 5. There's more. 21 moved from District 6 to District 5. 1713 moved from District 4 to District 3. 1414 moved from District 4 to District 5. 151 moved from District 3 to District 4. I just, again, want to say thank you. This was obviously a very contentious process, whenever it's, and whenever legislators are drawing lines, there's a lot at stake for people individually, and we always have to remember to center what's most important to the voters. I've said this repeatedly, as a lawyer who's worked in this space, that I think the best thing for this body and for bodies in general is to have independent redistricting commissions, so that at least there's a level of independence, and we know that the mistrust that often can come from the process, or the willing and dealing, or self-interest, or self-preservation, that at least the public can be assured that that's not what's happening. We don't have that advantage to have an independent redistricting commission, and so it's us, it's all of us, to do this really, really hard work. And I want to say thank you again. I want to thank all the communities of interest that came and testified. I want to thank my colleagues for bringing their knowledge and their expertise to this area. And as Chair of this committee, I recommend moving the listed docket, docket number 09, let me make sure I have the right docket, 0942, from the committee to the full council for discussion and formal action. At this time, my recommendation to the full council would be that these matters ought to pass in a new draft, and that the remaining dockets be placed on file.
Thank you, Council Louie Jen. Would anyone like to speak at this time? There's a question on the floor from Council Royal. Council Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. Is there a, the ordinance that we filed, obviously it has amendments to it now, is there like a version of that that we can see? The amended version of the ordinance? Or does the committee report serve as the amended ordinance?
There's a question on the floor from Council Royal to Council Louie Jen.
It's been answered.
The Chair recognizes Council Louie Jen.
But for the public, maybe?
Yeah, for the public, this is the amended version of the ordinance with these precincts
At this time, would anyone, anyone like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes, the Chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Just a question. Would it be possible to have a population summary report generated using the, the redistricting software to get an idea of the population breakdown in these, in these new districts?
Thank you, Council Braden. There's a, there's a question on the floor from Council Braden. Council Louie Jen, would you like to respond to Council Braden's question?
Yes, I can make sure that everyone has that information.
Does it, there's a question on the floor of Council Royal. Council Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you. I actually just want to, out of an abundance of caution, if there's a possibility that we add the docket as well with those amendments, I think there should be a docket with the committee report, but I'm not. In my experience, the only reason I say this, in my experience as government operations, we usually have the amended docket, and then we have the committee report as well, if it's possible to have the amended docket plus the committee report.
Council Louie Jen, there's a question on the floor from Council Royal. Would you, would you like to respond to it?
Yes, I mean, I would like for us to be able to take a vote, but all of this, we can have an amended docket number. I, I don't know if there needs to be an amended docket number.
Can the, if the clerk can just settle, if we vote on the, on the committee report with these amendments enshrined in the committee report, does that make sure that they're enshrined in what we're passing?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
At this, at this time, I'm recognizing Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleague for her hard work in this I just want to make sure that as we continue to move through this process, if my colleague can just kind of further break down and help us understand kind of the decision-making process, because I'm always more concerned about how we get to where we are than I am just getting there. So if you could just help our audience understand some of the very specific changes that you made, and in the interest of making sure that we are leading with the guiding principles, just kind of help me understand your decision-making process, please.
Thank you, Council Mejia. Question on the floor from Council Mejia. Council Louie Jen, would you like to respond to it?
Yes, Council Flaherty, oh, Council President Flynn. We started, the judge issued her order enjoining the use of the map, so meaning that we couldn't use the map that was passed by the city council. We were tasked with the, with, we had the task of drawing a new map. We heard input from colleagues, we had the judge's instruction, we have the traditional redistricting principles, and the letter of the law, and input from public testimony as we decided how best to build these new districts. So it was really a collaborative effort of listening to everyone and figuring out what could and couldn't work.
Okay. The Chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
So I'm still a little bit confused in terms of everybody being heard, because a lot of the things that I've heard are not reflected in this final report. So I just want to know who you're listening to.
Council Louie Jen, would you want to respond to that?
I'll just say that in this, this is a spirit of compromise. We have a, we have a 12 body, we have a membership of 12, usually 13, 12, and it is really difficult to get everyone and everything that everyone wants in a map, especially when we have a judge order. And so I am, I know that there are things in here that some people don't want, right? And I know there are things in here that some people want, or would have wanted other things in here. Compromise, we're a 12-member body.
Thank you, Council Louie Jen. The Chair seeks acceptance of the committee report, passage of docket 0942 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote on docket number 0942. Council Royal. Council Royal, aye. Council Baker.
Aye.
Council Baker, aye. Council Braden.
Aye.
Council Braden, aye. Council Coletta.
Yes.
Council Coletta, aye. Council Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez-Anderson, aye. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, aye. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, aye. Council Lara.
Nay.
Council Lara, nay. Council Louie Jen.
Yes.
Council Louie Jen, aye. Council Mur, Council Mejia.
No.
Council Mejia, no. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, aye. And Council Rell.
Yes.
Council Rell, aye. 10 votes in the affirmative and 2 votes in the negative. Docket number 0942 has passed.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The other dockets will be placed on file. Thank you, Council Louie Jean. We're on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, we're on docket 0976.
Docket number 0976. Council Flynn offered the following. Resolution in support of Recreational Equipment, Inc., REI workers.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I will be very brief. I'm filing this resolution in support of REI workers who recently voted to unionize under United Food and Commercial Workers 1445. Would anyone like to add their name or would anyone like to speak on this matter? Mr. Clerk, could you please add Council Baker, Council Braden, Council Coletta, Council Flaherty, Council Louie Jean, Council Murphy, Council Worrell? The Chair seeks suspension of rules and adoption of docket 0976. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, the next docket is 0977, please.
Docket number 0977. Council Murphy offered the following. Resolution recognizing the contributions of the Boston Emergency Medical Services and recognizing Boston Emergency Medical Services Week.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I know we did that earlier at the beginning, so thank you, Clerk, and thank you, everyone, for supporting our EMS.
Would anyone like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Arroyo, Council Baker, Council Braden, Council Coletta, Council Flaherty, Council Louie Jean, Council Worrell. Please have the chair. Council Murphy seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0977. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has been adopted. We're on to personnel orders, Mr. Clerk?
Docket number 0978. Council Flynn for Council Braden.
The Chair seeks suspension of rules and passage of docket 0978. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0979.
Docket number 0979. Council Flynn for Council Braden.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0979. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, we're on to docket 0980.
Docket number 0980. Council Flynn for Council Mahia.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0980. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0981.
Docket number 0981. Council Flynn for Council Lara.
The Chair seeks suspension of rules and passage of docket 0981. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0982.
Docket number 0982. Council Flynn for Council Lara.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0982. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0983.
Docket number 0983. Council Flynn for Council Lara.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0983. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0984.
Docket number 0984. Council Flynn offered the following.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0984. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0985.
Docket number 0985. Council Flynn offered the following.
The Chair seeks suspension of rules and passage of this docket 0985. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. We're on to late files. I've been informed by the clerk that there are 10 late file matters, 9 personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, can we do the 9 personnel orders first? Yeah, we can. Well, the remaining late file is a letter from the mayor. Why don't we do that one first, Mr. Clerk?
First late file from the office of the mayor, Mayor Michelle Wu. Dear city councilors, I hereby withdraw docket number 0812 filed in the office of the city clerk on April 24, 2023. Sincerely, Mayor Wu.
Mr. Clerk, before we do that, can we add these late file matters into the agenda? All 10 late file matters into the agenda? We'd have to take a vote on it. Again, there's 9, 9 on personnel orders and the remaining one is the letter from the mayor. All in favor of adding these late file matters into the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. These late file matters, 10 of them have been added into the agenda. Mr. Clerk, that late file matter from the mayor, that will be placed on file?
Yes.
We're on to the 9 remaining late files?
Personnel orders. Council Flynn for Council Arroyo.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. This late file matter has been passed.
Personnel order. Council Flynn for Council Arroyo.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. This late file matter has passed.
Personnel order. Council Flynn for Council Fernandez Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. This late file matter has passed.
Personnel order. Council Flynn for Council Flaherty.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. This late file matter has passed.
Personnel order. Council Flynn for Council Flaherty.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. This late file matter has passed.
Personnel order. Council Flynn for Council Mahia.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. This late file matter has passed.
Personnel order. Council Flynn for Council Mahia.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. This late file matter has passed.
Personnel order. Council Flynn for Council Mahia.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. This late file matter has passed.
Personnel order. Council Flynn for Council Mahia.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. This late file matter has passed. We're on to green sheets. We're on to the consent agenda. I have been informed by the clerk that there are 0 additions to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We're on to memorials. And after I read these names, I do want to give everybody the opportunity to talk about a loved one, a family member, constituent, a friend that has recently passed away. Today, we're going to adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Council Braden, Kathleen Lonigan. For Council Murphy, Mark Wright. At this time, I'm going to ask my colleagues if they would like to speak. Please let me know. I'll start on this side. The Chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a moment or two to pay tribute to Kathleen Lonigan. She is an immigrant from Ireland, long... came from Galway, Craigmore, County Galway, Ireland. She's married for nearly 60 years and has a longstanding resident of Alston Brighton in Oak Square. I had the honor of attending her wake the other evening and tremendous outpouring of support from the whole community, but I just wanted to extend our condolences from all of us to the Lonigan family and hope that she be fondly remembered in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. The Chair recognizes Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
I want to do this respectfully because we're in memoriam, but I just wanted to make us a comment about the docket, just so that everyone is on the same page. I wanted to give the District R number. So the District R number is 1-855-91. 1-855-91. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. I also wanted to recognize the upcoming federal holiday, Memorial Day. For many, it's a painful reminder of a loved one that paid the supreme sacrifice for our nation. But for every day, for our Gold Star families, every day is really Memorial Day. But on this day, on Memorial Day, it's also important for us as Americans to remember the men and women that made the supreme sacrifice for our nation and to remember their families as well, their children, their spouses, their parents. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, that we do so in memory of those individuals mentioned today. We are scheduled to meet again in the Ayinella Chamber on Wednesday, June 7, at 12:00. Before we adjourn, I do want to recognize Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. This is not an in memoriam, it's just an announcement. I just know that we are wrapping up a big and long process and I don't want to adjourn the meeting without extending my thanks to Council Liz Braden, who did an incredible amount of work to get us to where we are today. I think that in the most progressive council that the city of Boston has ever seen, taking the chance, the one-in-10-year chance that we get to do redistricting and really showing the people of the city that you are willing to not capitulate to the status quo and that you were willing to make changes that were going to empower some of our most marginalized community. It is a bomb to me to know that you were willing to do that and I hope that to all of the folks that are here, that it is a bomb to them to know that some of us are going to hold the line when it comes to making sure that we're protecting communities and although the second half of the process, at least to me, I won't speak to any of my council colleagues, was not a reflection of that commitment as we spend multiple days having a conversation about bulldozing through a black neighborhood to protect all of the rest. I know and I hope that that people see that you put an incredible amount of labor, an incredible amount of love and care into what we did here. And although we ended up at a different place, I want you to know that I am grateful. And on behalf of my community at least, I know that they're grateful to you as well. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes... the Chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I also, I know that I didn't get to say this yesterday to my council colleague Louie Jean. I want to thank you. I know that you took on a huge under ordeal and whatever your positions are and disagreements that we had, I felt that some conversations had to be held publicly, but I think that in the process of correcting or in the process of making my position known, if I offended you, if I hurt you in any way, even if it was warranted, I don't... I didn't want to do that. For Council Braden, thank you for being an ally and to the lowlifes that are calling you a race hater, I got your back. I appreciate you.
I'm going to go to Council Braden and then Council Flaherty, then Council Arroyo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been an incredible journey since probably last April we started this journey on our redistricting process. We went through many turns in the journey, turns in the road. I want to thank everyone on the council for their work. I know they come to the work with their own ideals and their commitments to their neighborhoods and it has... by its very nature, this is a very political process. But we've got this job completed and I want to thank my colleague, Council Louie Jean, for taking up the reins this last 2 weeks and guiding us over the finish line. I also want to recognize the incredible work that my team have done in all of this work, hundreds of hours of analysis. I came to the table with data and figures and am probably bored you all to death with numbers, but that's due to the diligent work of my team who were committed to this process and I want to give them thanks for all of their integrity and their work in this space. And I also want to urge us all to come together and let's put this behind us. Redistricting happens every 10 years. It's usually very contentious, but we have some really, really incredible work, hard work, difficult work, important work to do in this council and we need to set, you know, put this behind us and let's get going. We have a huge backlog of dockets and ordinances and awaiting attention in the government affairs and we have the budget to attend to. All very important work to do for the city of Boston, so let's get to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. I'm going to take, give everybody the opportunity to speak at this time, but going forward, I do want us to really talk about a loved one that has passed away. That's what this remaining segment is for, is to bring us together talking about a loved one. I really don't want to get engaged in politics, but I do want to give everyone the opportunity to speak. The Chair recognizes Council Arroyo.
Thank you, Council President, and I will keep it brief because I believe it was eloquently stated by Council Lara and Council Fernandez Anderson, but I also want to commend Council Braden for standing as an ally for some of our most marginalized communities, most marginalized communities as they fought to ensure that they had an equal opportunity to elect a candidate they're choosing, whether that was with Matapan or whether that was with Chinatown or whether that was with Viva Victoria and folks who are in... or BHA housing. And so I'm very grateful to her for leading in this process and I think she has received an overwhelming amount of public criticism through social media, through sort of troll accounts and things of that nature. And I know that that takes tolls on folks sometimes, but I want you to know that your efforts and your work have been seen and that the way in which you have moved throughout the entirety of this process with grace has been seen and I'm grateful to you for being a member of this body. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Arroyo. The Chair recognizes Council Flaherty. Then I'll go to Council Louie Jean. Council Flaherty, you have the floor. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to obviously commend our colleague and Chair Louie Jean for her great work on this, deliberate, thoughtful, and fair. Unfortunately, there's ways to draw maps and there's ways not to draw maps. The federal court made a decision, issued a federal injunction, told us to get back into the room and to draw a map appropriately based on the rules of compactness, contiguity, and making sure that race is not a factor in that. My grandmother taught me a long time ago, you win like a winner and you lose like a winner. In fairness to the ordinary citizens, to the members of public housing, to the civic association leaders, to wood committee members, the plaintiffs who came forward, stuck together and forced us into this situation whereby they were handed a federal court injunction directing us to come back to this very chamber, to roll up our sleeves, to work in concert in earnest, in fairness, selfless, giving a little bit to get a little bit. And that's obviously why we're here today. And it was through the leadership of the Chair in being able to sort of herd all of that together in a very cooperative fashion. Is it a perfect map? Nope. There are no perfect maps. Is everybody happy? Nope. Not everyone's happy.
Not everyone's happy. Everybody get what they want? Nope. Not everyone got what they wanted. And in, in my experience, as the longest-serving member here and someone that has gone through redistricting, that sends, that tends to show that it's, it's a good map, because not everybody got what they wanted, and everyone had to give a little bit, they had to get a little bit, and that's why we're here today. And again, it was through the shepherding of the Chair, the Vice Chair, the committee members, on a very aggressive timeline, put on us by the federal court, but let's, let it not be lost on us, that we were here because ordinary citizens, banded together as plaintiffs, directing our attention to that, and we have to embrace that. We have to recognize, and for the newer members, or for those that will be here for years moving forward, and may even be here for another redistricting, and I may even be here for another redistricting, and God knows, but learn from this, to my newer, younger colleagues, learn from this experience. There's a way to do it, there's a way not to do it, and I believe that the way it was done today was appropriate and fair and balanced. Again, not everyone's happy, but we're moving forward, and in the spirit of the previous speaker, Counsel Braden, let's come together, let's be prepared to work again next week. We've got a very important budget. Counsel Fernandez Anderson is doing tremendous work on behalf of this body, trying to get consensus around the budget. We've got a lot of work to do. Let's put this in the rearview mirror and move forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. I'm going to call on Counsel Louie Jeanne. Did you want to speak, Counsel? I'm going to call on Counsel Meheer. Counsel Meheer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I thank my colleague for her leadership in moving us along. I just want to note for the record that oftentimes, we are here and we make difficult votes, but because I am an activist and because I know who put me here, I know who I fight for, and my votes are always going to stand with the people. And so, for me, that gives me a sense of calm, and I can sleep at night, because I know that regardless of whether or not compromises are important, the one thing I will never do is compromise the will of the people that have brought me here. And so, for me, I know that as I continue to navigate the political landscape analysis that I see here happening all the time, is that you have to see where people stand in the times of the hardest decisions, and then pay attention to what they say and what they do, and at the end of the day, that's what will always matter to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Meheer. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, and we're at the end, so I will be brief, but I would be remiss if I just didn't thank first Counsel Arroyo and then Counsel Braden for their leadership in shepherding us through the process. And Counsel Louie Jeanne, you have demonstrated incredible leadership throughout all of this. Nobody can take that away from you, and how you carried yourself, and how you carried us through this process. The city of Boston is, is watching, and I think the city of Boston is, is better for it, so just wanted to commend you. And then I just want to commend my colleagues for the spirited discussion. We all faced significant pressures throughout this entire process. And, you know, again, as Counsel Flaherty has mentioned, I've said it a million times too, everybody didn't get 100% of what they wanted, but at least we can walk away and say that this was truly compromised. So, I'm, I'm proud of my colleagues, and I am proud of this body today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. The Chair recognizes Counsel Louie Jeanne. Counsel Louie Jeanne, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I too want to thank you, Counsel Biden, because you are actually the only person who can understand what the last 2 weeks has been like for me, and it has not been easy. And we've talked quite often. Your advocacy helped move things along, and so I appreciate you, and I appreciate the information that you brought to the fore, and I know how difficult it is when you're getting it from all sides. And so, just thank you for what you've shared with me. Thank you for the work of your staff. I also want to thank my colleagues, Counsel Coletta and Counsel Arroyo, who believed in my leadership, for me to lead this body and steward us through this process on a, a very difficult and very short timeline. I am an attorney who worked on these cases. For that reason, during the first half, folks were like, why aren't you stepping up to do this? It's because I know how contentious it is. It is because I know how difficult it is. And as a baby attorney, when I was assigned to these cases, and I would be reading the depositions, and I would be defending black, black plaintiffs who were bringing racial gerrymandering claims, I would see these records and these statements made by people on the floor, and I would say, there is, there is no good way of doing this, because there's no way to separate interests here. The best way forward is via an independent redistricting commission. I will say that over and over and over, so that we do not have the mistrust that often can fester in this process. That said, I am incredibly proud of this body. I'm incredibly proud of each and every one of my colleagues, because I know this is very difficult. I am an at-large city councillor. These lines, in the way that they matter to some of you individually, they don't matter to me in the same way, and I understand that. And I understand that people are coming to the table with all of that, fighting for so many different people and so many different communities. This work is hard. We just did something that was incredibly hard. So, I thank all of you for your commitment to this city, to this work, and as Counsel Biden said, we have a lot of work to do outside of these lines for the people of this city, and I appreciate every one of you. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have one final word.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden.
I think one of the things that made this process so incredibly difficult was the desperate need that we have to reprecinct more of our districts. We have precincts that have 6,000, 7,000 people in them, and if you need to move a precinct and the 7,000 people, it automatically causes all sorts of ripple effects through the map. So, I'm hoping that we make a commitment to advocate for a robust redistricting between now and the next re-district, reprecincting before the next redistricting process. It would make it a lot easier for all concerned, regardless of who's doing it, whether it's councillors or whether it's an independent commission. We desperately need to do some reprecincting and get our, reprecincting once in 100 years is not going to cut it right now. We need to do it much more frequently.